Good evening and welcome to the July 25, 2022, meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. And this meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format, both remotely as well as in person. And I will be reading a few points about our hybrid procedure in just a moment. I will mention that this meeting is being recorded, and it will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. Also, if anyone is recording the meeting, can you please notify us? I'll give you a few seconds in case you're connected by phone and are muted. It's all right to record the meeting, but we do need to be notified. So this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation in accordance with Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and shall afford adequate alternative means of public access via Microsoft Teams and by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. That's 1-508-945-4410. And the conference ID number is 231-264-929. Again, that's 231-264-929. And as I mentioned, you can also join the meeting online using Microsoft Teams through the link that is in the agenda that is posted on the town website. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. And as I mentioned, we'll post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. I'm going to go through a few points regarding our procedural steps for this hybrid meeting. I'll start with a roll call of all the board members. When, if you are a non-board member, a member of the public, when you've been recognized by the chair to speak, please repeat your name and also the last four digits of your phone number if you are connected remotely by phone. Again, because it is a hybrid format, we need to identify all speakers clearly. And after an agenda item has been discussed by the planning board, I will request comments or questions from the public or non-board members. And of course, you may speak when recognized by the chair. We will take, we'll continue to take all votes by roll call, even though the planning board is present. We'll continue to take our votes by roll call. And at the end of the meeting, we'll close the meeting with a verbal confirmation of adjournment, and we'll note the time of adjournment. So let's start with a roll call of board members. Art Spru, our vice chair.
Art Spru, present.
And Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, present.
Bob Wertschfter.
Bob Wertschfter, present.
And Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, present.
And Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, present.
And Roger Griffin was possibly going to join us remotely, but he's not connected. So Roger will not be joining the meeting tonight. This is Catherine Halpern. I am also here. I should ask any board members if you have to recuse yourself from any matter on tonight's agenda. Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, 782-784-Main Street.
Okay, so Bob Dubus recues. Make a note. Thank you. So let's continue with the first agenda item, which is the minutes from June 27. Are there any corrections, additions, amendments from board members? Yes, Art Spru.
Yes, just have a couple.
Okay.
On page two, under Formal in the middle, after 29 Meeting House Road, the motion was made by Mr. Dubus and seconded by Mr. Spru to accept. I believe the appropriate word would be to approve the formal site plan.
Yes, I think that is correct, yes.
And the same thing for 2 Twine Field Drive below. It should be approved.
Yes, correct. Thank you.
And a third item, I wasn't quite sure if we need to clarify this. You can just let me know. At the very end, the motion was made by Mr. Dubus and seconded by Mr. Spru to send a letter to the ZBA voting aye. But it, I think what we, what we said, and I'm just suggesting this language and seeing if that's appropriate, stating the planning board approved these site plans with conditions is...
Yes, I think that...
I think that's what our intent was, since both, both of them went through the ZBA. But I think this was more of an informational one for them, but...
Correct.
It could be whatever you'd like as board.
Yeah, I think general language like that, just to clarify. Yeah, and you're right. It was, it had already gone through ZBA, so we were just sending our comments, so...
And I'd like to make a motion. We accept the amendments with those modifications?
Yes.
I had, I had one question. I wasn't here. But when we take the vote, is the, and you listed as three numbers, is the third number the no's and the middle one is the, is the abstains?
It's how it's written. So it's, the ayes are first, the nays are second, and the abstain is last.
Okay, so there's a vote that was 501. I don't have it in front of me. That, that... Oh.
Oh, there.
Yeah.
Chain. Oh, so, no, you're correct. A motion was made on the next page, on page three. A motion was made by Mr. Dubus and seconded by Mr. Spru to research engaging an independent airport engineer. And also, we should change that. Consultant might be a better word. May not necessarily be an engineer, but it may be. Voting aye, Halpern, Spru, Gagin, Griffin, Dubus, five. Voting nay, Chain, one. Abstain, none. So it should have been 510, correct? Yeah, if, if it goes in that order.
I pay more attention when I'm not there than when I'm there.
When I'm there.
Pretty good eagle eye.
And then I'll make my motion, extend it with both comments from myself and Bob, as, make a motion to accept it.
Do we have any other?
Bob Dubus, I'll, I'll second it.
All right. If there's no other changes or additions, let's do a roll call vote to approve the minutes from June 27 with the three corrections from Art Spru and Bob Wertschfter. So Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Bob Wertschfter?
Bob Wertschfter, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Catherine Halpern, I also approve. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an approval not required for Mill Pond Lane, 75 Shattuck Place, and 21 Shattuck Lane. Do I have a presenter for this matter? There's no one present.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. This is Todd Chapman with Coastal Engineering.
Oh, great. Thank you.
I am covering, you're very welcome. I'm covering for John McElway.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Todd Chapman. I'm a registered professional land surveyor in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. What we have before you this afternoon is an approval-not-required plan. The plan presented is a strip of land that was generated by differing property descriptions created by the Menke family in the late 1940s. The gap is not indicated on the Chatham Assessors map and was discovered around 1977 on a survey by Nickerson and Berger. There was a deed written in around the late 1960s that confirmed the title into the Menke family of this strip. The Menke estate has conveyed the property to Ms. Doughty and Ms. Fink, who are abudders to the parcel to the west. The plan is proposing to divide the strip into two parcels, which will not be used, will, which, excuse me, will be used in conjunction with the abutting properties to the west, the Doughty property and the Fink Rosenberg property. And we believe this should be approved as an approval-not-required. And if anybody has any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you very much. And you'll note on the staff report that basically this does meet our requirements for an approval-not-required. But that being said, I will ask if any board members have any questions or comments for the applicant? Nope. So in this case, we would endorse the approval-not-required. May I have a motion?
This is Warren Chain. She'll move.
May I have a second?
Bob Wertschfter.
All right, so we'll do our roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Bob Wertschfter?
Bob Wertschfter, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve that we endorse this A and R entitled Plan of Land, Chatham, Massachusetts, Prepared for Doughty and Fink, dated June 30, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the release of covenant statement of conditions for 279 Kroll Road. This has been continued from June 27. And at that time, the board discussed that if it was continued yet another time without providing any additional information from the applicant that's been requested by the board, that rather than continue it yet again, that we could take a vote with the option to deny the, the release, in which case the applicant would need to bring it back to us when they do have the information that we've requested. And that way, it doesn't continue on our agenda forever and ever. So that was, that was the suggestion from the board. So may I, so again, the, the formal way is we would make the motion in the positive that we would approve the release, but if you don't agree with that, you would vote nay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Bill Riley?
Yes, Mr. Riley.
How are you today?
Good. How are you? Please go ahead.
So the, there are two items that we have to deal with here. One is dealing with stormwater treatment, and the other is the maintenance bond. And the, the... So on the, so there are two issues on the stormwater. One is the stormwater drainage in the driveway that was designed by an engineer. We submitted a plan showing that it had been constructed in accordance with the design. And we had a problem with stormwater on the left-hand side of the property entering the property of Neil Cole's next door. And Mr. Carlton engaged the services of a, of a landscaper. They put in a drain with a box with gravel in it, sort of leaching catch basin sort of in the lawn itself. Then we had another storm, and we still had a stormwater going off, well, down the bank towards the adjacent property. So they, they took out that particular drain. They did a little regrading and put in a larger drain. And the, since then, there's been no issue with the adjoining property. I went out, I had Ryder Wilcox mark the property line with two stakes that are still in the ground. And the, from the lawn where the, where the drainage was going down towards Dr. Cole's property, there's four or five feet of gravel, which is basically incorporated into Dr. Cole's driveway. So we have, so I don't think, I think right now, we're in good shape with stormwater entering Dr. Cole's property. Just to the extent it's not picked up by drain in the lawn, the... And I haven't seen any evidence that it's not, but to the extent it's not, you would have, it would be absorbed by the gravel portion of the applicant's property, which, as you say, if you look at it, you can see that the, there's four or five feet of gravel between our lawn and the property line for Dr. Cole's. So I believe we've solved the drainage issue. The other thing that remains is the maintenance bond. And candidly, it's my fault. They were sent to me the form, and I never got my client to sign it. So I'll, I'll have that signed and delivered by the end of the week. And hopefully, you know, you can put it on your next meeting and be a, you know, formal end of this long road we're dealing with here.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. The only thing is, is we did not receive this information in advance of the meeting to be included in the packets. So the information that we were operating with is that we've received no new information. And the board had suggested that at the last meeting, that if that were the case at this meeting, that they wanted to consider voting to deny the release and just have you and the applicant resubmit everything with complete information. So I'm just going to ask the board what you'd like to do. Tom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If they're going to resubmit the application, I would like to ask the question of Bill. Is there, with this additional drainage, any formal structure that has been committed to the stranger, this drainage, or is it just gravel that's been put into a hole to take up the slack from stormwater management?
Yeah, there's a structure on the lawn, at the high point of the lawn before, before it comes out, before the stormwater would have an opportunity to run down onto the adjacent property.
Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. You've had additional drainage put on Dr. Cole's property. Is that correct?
Well, the additional, well, I think, I'm not, I'm not entirely certain how the gravel got there. I don't know if Dr. Cole's put it on there or if my client put it on there. The, and I know Mr. Dubus has recused himself in the past on this one, but I know it was, I understand it was his company that actually placed the gravel. And so I don't have the details on it. I just know, because I had the property line staked, that four or five feet of the gravel is on the 279 Kroll Road property.
Well, my question would be, is there any formal engineering or draft of this that the board could review for your next meeting? So we would have a better understanding of the physical nature of the drainage. I think that this would be helpful for any future issues. There's been a lot of sensitivity in that area, and the town had to deal with it. I don't know if we have any structure that has been presented to this board to talk about the stormwater drainage. Is there anything available that the board could review or take a look at?
Well, the difficulty is that because of the nature of the ground in that area, it's lawn and planting beds, the surveyors and the engineers have told me they can't do a formal analysis of the capability of the drainage structure that's been placed in the lawn, or the gravel for that matter. So I'm not aware, Tom, of anything that we could provide from an engineer, which is, I assume what you are referring to, that would state categorically that stormwater would be taken care of. So I'd have to say no. I don't think we, I don't think we will have anything like that.
Go ahead.
Well, my question would be, because of the sensitivity of that area, particularly Dr. Cole's property, that there was a lot of damage done in the flooding that had been done with a very large, major rain event, that as a member of this board, I'd, I'd like to know that we're signing off on something that can be reviewed in the future if this event continues. Right now, we're kind of looking at an X-ray view through material that's in place, and we don't have anything recorded with the board, with the town, that would help us understand any future problems, Bill.
Well, I think the, I think the thing to keep in mind is the, the damage that you refer to was a result of poor drainage planning by the town, not the result of anything that happened on 279 Kroll Road. And the, the, the only thing that, that led us to realize there was some stormwater runoff from our property to Dr. Cole's was a, you know, some, some of the mulch washed down. And there was some, some water on Dr. Cole's driveway. We did, other than the fact that there was some water on Dr. Cole's driveway, you know, it did, it did no damage to Dr. Cole's property. And maybe what I should do is talk to Dr. Cole's and see if he's satisfied with the changes. As I say, I'm not aware of, because of the nature of the ground. In other words, it's a lawn. It's a planting bed. The, typically, you wouldn't expect significant stormwater runoff from a lawn area. And to the extent that there's any stormwater going off the lawn, you know, it's, it's going into this gravel area. And the, the, I mean, I can hire somebody to go out and dig up the gravel to see how deep the gravel is.
No, no, Bill. I'm not suggesting that. And I, I have a suggestion, and it's just mine. It hasn't been discussed with the other board members. My suggestion, no pun intended in terms of the weather pattern that we're having now, but would it be an advantage to your client that we put some time aside until we had a measurable, we can agree on the number, volume of water, two, three-inch rain event, to see if that, in fact, has been taken care of and mitigates any issues for the adjacent property? To go out and dig up, it's rather attractive that what has been done there. So again, just a suggestion from me, that maybe a solution for this would be to put, put off any activity from the board or any board from the, voting on this. If we had an event that would assure the board that what is in place now is very adequate or adequate for what we need.
Yes, Arthur?
Well, I, I do recall what, certain aspects of... Well, I do recall what, certain aspects of what occurred here as part of the construction that created this issue. I believe the original lot adjacent to Crowell Road, as part of the subdivision, had a depression in the front. And that depression was essentially the point of where, a low point, and it accepted runoff from not just the lot itself, from the subdivision that abutted Crowell Road, but it also took runoff from the adjacent doctor's office site. So what I, what I observed, when I went out there to take a look at this, is the grade was raised significantly on the lot, as part of the subdivision that abutted Crowell Road, and someone had put a structure in to deal with drainage from the doctor's site. We asked for documentation about that, because essentially, they changed the stormwater characteristics with the construction of the lot the way they did. There was no indication that they were going to do that, so we asked for information associated with that. That means, you go out there, you figure out what was put in the ground, how, what's the depth of it, and what is, what kind of runoff is it accepting? Yes, go out and hire an engineer to do that, he can do that. So I expect that that should be the information, that's what we asked for before, and that should be the information that we should receive before we released this. Otherwise, the development, the subdivision and the lot that was created is impacting via butters. And it'll continue to impact the butters unless there's sufficient information to show that it's been addressed. Very much the same things that Tom was saying, is what I'm saying, just with a different explanation and clarity from, from what I understand.
Yes, this is Catherine. To my memory, I think what Arthur and Tom have said is correct, and the board did request that additional information a long, long time ago, and this has been continued and continued repeatedly. With that request for information still open, and I'm sorry, Mr. Riley, but in my humble opinion, and again, this is my opinion, to give us the information you've given us at the meeting, rather than submitting in advance the full information that's been summarized by Art and Tom, in a timely manner, so that the board can review it in advance of the meeting, and make a clear decision about the release that's requested, it's just not sufficient for, it doesn't address what the board has actually requested. So I think in this case, if I'm reading the board correctly, we would not be able to release at this time, to grant the release at this time. So what's before the board is to either continue, let me finish, Mr. Riley, is either to continue this matter yet again, or to deny the release and to allow you to submit the matter again to the board with the full information as has been previously requested. And I'm just going to defer to the board members to make that decision, how we'd like to proceed.
Madam Chair, I'd like to respond to Art Spru, please.
All right, please go ahead.
Art, the reason that we haven't provided information regarding, is that the engineers have told me, because it's a lawn, and not an asphalt driveway, that they are not able to calculate the drainage requirements. And the, so I'm sort of two-blocked, in terms of you want something from an engineer, the engineers are telling me we can't give you anything. So I'm, you know, I'm really kind of stuck in terms of how do we proceed? I thought that showing the, showing the fact that there's a substantial, in fact, what used to be the low area, is now gravel, which is really part of Dr. Cole's driveway, although it's on our property. I thought that would be sufficient, and maybe, maybe the engineers can say, can estimate the ability of that gravel to absorb stuff, but they don't even know what they're absorbing, because there's no way to measure how the stormwater will come off that lawn area. At least that's what they've told me. Maybe I'm using the wrong engineers, I don't know.
Yeah, Mr. Riley, I've never met an engineer who said, "I can't give you anything. I can't give you any information." So I'm saying that in jest, but I'm somewhat serious, I'd like to hear comments also from Art and from Mr. Gagin.
The issue, the, the structure that was placed, was placed on the doctor's property. The runoff is coming from the doctor's property to capture that and put it into that infiltrating structure that was placed. Again, there was no documentation, no plans, no notification that that was being done. It was done because the depression that was in the subdivision lot was removed. There was, I believe, a neighborhood of around two, three feet of fill above the grade with the adjacent property. And then that caused, that moved the low spot over onto the doctor's property. You can, as an engineer, you can calculate a tributary area, you can calculate the runoff based on the characteristics, on whether it's gravel, grass, impervious area, and you can determine the runoff to that structure. Any engineer can do that, who knows how to design stormwater in the state of Massachusetts? So I suggest you go out, talk to your engineer to provide that information. To me, it's essential in order to sign off on this, this release, it's essential. Without that, go back and then place a depression on the lot from the original subdivision that's, that you have there. I don't think you want to do that, that doesn't make sense. You know, so just have an engineer do the related work, and, and bring the information back to us, and then we can sign off on it, it's as simple as that. But somebody has to document this, and there's no documentation, and that's what I'm concerned about.
Thanks, I think, no, Mr. Riley, I'm going to recognize Mr. Gagin, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill, the contractor that installed this, I think, is John Martin's company, and if he installed it, I'm sorry?
Installed what? Installed what?
The drainage, the gravel that's been put on the property. Was he the contractor that put this material there?
See, I think he was, I think he was, he might have been working for Dr. Cole's. That's why I'm confused, you know, in other words, I think Dr. Cole's did work there, without knowing it was on our property.
Go ahead, Mr. Gagin.
It's out to John Martin, it's out to Dr. Cole's. So you guys do whatever you want, and I'll be back as soon as I have some information.
I haven't finished with my suggestion in terms of trying to get past, past the board's issues. What I was going to suggest, if we knew who installed that material, were there any witnesses to that installation? And if there were, perhaps your applicant and you, as the legal advice for the applicant, might want to get in the loop of the actual construction, and maybe they can give you some testimony that would further clarify what was done there. I'm just trying to be positive on this, Bill.
No, 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 I appreciate, you know, I appreciate that. You know, I'll go find out from Dr. Cole's who did the work, and I'll get back to you.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Riley, I think Bob Wertschafter.
Yes, I move that we vote on this as to whether we're going to approve it or not, and if we end up denying it, that they can come back and refile it later.
Would you like to make a motion, and we make the motion in the positive?
Yes, I make a motion that we
Approve the release.
This release.
Do I have a second?
Tom Gagin, second.
All right, let's do our roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, no.
Bob Dubus. Oh, Bob Dubus, are you recused from this?
I'm abstained.
You're abstained, okay. Bob Wertschafter?
No.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, no.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, no.
And this is Catherine Help, and I also vote no. Thanks, Mr. Riley, so you need to bring the matter back to us with full information. All right, next item on our agenda is the formal site plan review for 782, 784 Main Street. Bob Dubus is recusing himself, so, Mr. Dubus, I'll ask you to step down from the dais, now that we're back at the dais, thanks so much. And this is regarding a proposed demolition of the existing structure at 784 Main Street, and construct, excuse me, construction of a new building with professional office space on the first floor, and three two-bedroom apartments on the second floor. This matter has been continued from June 27th meeting. The board did request some additional information, and I have Mr. Zender and Leslie Steen, is it Steenberger? Yes, who would be answering questions. But, Mr. Dubus, do you have something to say?
Madam Chairman, I made a mistake.
Yes.
I thought that we were talking about Wes Chatham, the Samantha's.
Okay, we have that a little later.
I apologize, but, so.
All right. It's 1218 Main Street that you have to recuse yourself from, is that correct? Okay, so, great, thank you, Mr. Dubus. So who will be presenting first, is it Mr. Zender?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody, and first of all, I owe you an apology, because, because of my timing, I'm going to have to drop off at 5:45, but our team is on the line with it, which is Thad Eldridge from our survey company, Leslie Schneberger, the architect, and Matt Cole, also the principals on the line, so they can address any questions that the board has. I do note, just looking at the statute, General Act, Chapter 48, that this will require five affirmative votes to pass this, because it's a seven-member board, but I'd ask the board to bear that in mind, we're taking your votes, and we are going to ask that you take a vote on the matter. Thad has done, I think, a nice job of revising the plan to show some of the, some of the material the board was looking for, including driveway issues. He can explain two of those changes in a moment. We've also submitted, you've received a letter from Merrill Sweet at 790 Main Street, talking about their shared easement and the support for the project. As well as, we did a fairly comprehensive parking analysis of the areas around this, showing approximately 480 spaces that are available publicly to park for people who can be there, as well as Matt Cole will, will let you know that, you know, during this time that they've owned this property, they roughly have about two employees on site, and the majority of their meetings are virtual at this point. So we think that the parking, even though we meet the requirement in the bylaw for the parking, that the actual use of the building will certainly conform to the use of those parking spaces. So with that being said, I would just ask Thad very briefly, just to outline the changes to the plan for the board, and then we're happy to address any questions that you have. And we really hope, you know, we finally, you know, provided the necessary information for endorsement of the plan and approval, and thank you.
Thank you. So Thad, would you like to go ahead?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great.
Yes, go ahead.
Thad Eldridge, we reconfigured the handicap parking space, went to a 10-foot-wide van accessible with a six-foot aisle, and we were able to extend the walkway all the way to the sidewalk, that's on the east side of the property. We expanded the size of the trash enclosure, and we can fit eight two-by-two bins in there, two and a half by two and a half bins. And we've also shaded the shared driveway to show where that is coming in, and we have a 16-foot width between the curb and the utility pole that has been annotated.
Oh, good.
And if there are questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, yes, let's go to questions, I think, some of the, just in summary, and I think, again, the staff report documents this well, but one of the issues that the board had last time was parking. And the site plan, as submitted, does meet the requirements as stated in the bylaw. However, there is a sentence in the bylaw that allows the board a certain discretion in determining whether additional parking spaces might be needed above and beyond what is required in the bylaw, based on the proposed use of the building. And I think what the issue was, is there's nothing in the bylaw specifically that addresses the offices that are not for public use, and whether or not there are employees working in those offices. The applicant has documented that there's quite a few public parking areas within one-third mile, which is a comfortable walking distance, so you've got that documentation from the applicant. But I think parking was the issue, I think some of the other issues were the westerly vehicular entrance, and also the effect on the abutter of construction, and you do have the letter from the abutter. So I do think the applicant has submitted answers to a lot of our questions, but I'm going to go and see if you still have concerns and more questions for the applicant. So Art, please go ahead.
Okay, it was nice information that was provided. I'm familiar with some of the documentation that the applicant has sent in. However, the bylaws also state, no existing off-street parking may be counted toward the provision for required parking for the enlarged building or use. It's right in our regulations, right in the bylaw, I think it's Section B2. So really, unless it's addressed on-site, then it's not addressed. I then revisited the actual arrangement based on the zoning, too. The GB2 says it needs to be a 10-foot setback for parking. That means six spaces are within that criteria, that minimum criteria of a setback. So that's a ZBA-related issue. If that's not granted, then that cuts you back to, I think, nine spaces then? I think it's still a bunch of challenges here with parking. If you have professional offices with that many offices and people who could be working there, plus the number of departments you have with the required eight spaces there, I still am of the opinion that there needs to be additional provisions for parking. Now, there's ways the applicant can still consider that, but this plan, I don't believe, adjusts it. Also, when I spoke at last, last meeting, the bylaw states that the drive access needs to be 20 feet wide, 16 feet is not 20 feet. That means the utility pole's got to go, or an adjustment on your site needs to be made. I think 20 feet should be the absolute minimum for two vehicles to pass. If you had one-way traffic, there would be no issue here, all right? The previous layout, original, which had east entrance and a west exit, I understand why that was done and why it's changed, but you're only proposing one now, so you need to have a full 20-foot access. So I still think there's some challenges with the parking and the traffic circ, and the vehicle circulation, so I'm still not supportive of it, as, as submitted with the additional information. Thank you.
Thanks, Arthur. Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, I, I think the site plan is, is a very nice one. I, I am all for letting some of the parking go, personally. We are downtown, we know parking is tight, but I cannot argue with Art Spru when he has the facts in front of him. So it's up to the board to decide whether the 16 feet will pass, and the five feet is not our purview, but it's for the next branch to say yes or no.
The ZBA, you mean? Is that, you mean the ZBA?
Right.
Yeah.
And I believe they still have to go before them, correct?
Yeah.
My personal feeling on this is to let it go. We've, we've played with this, and played with this, and played with this, I think they have a good plan. They legally have the right parking places, except for the couple of glitches that could be overcome. And I'm not, I'm not just saying this because, you know, that there's any influence from anything or anybody or whatever. This is, we've, we've played with this, this is going to be a benefit to the town, more than, more than what is there now. Nobody in the neighborhood is complaining about this, that I can see. Matter of fact, the person that should complain the most is actually for it. And since he said he will, they will reconstruct anything, any damaged things or stuff like that, we're supposed to be helping people, and I think that, that they've, they've done everything they could, yeah. Could they shorten the building? Yes, they could shorten the building. Yes, they could shorten the building. But we all know it's economics, and they spent a lot of time and money into doing it this far. If they can live with this the way it is, then it's my gut feeling to let them go ahead and live with it the way it is. And if it's wrong, they'll have to work it out some other way. But from what I can see, they've done just about as much as they can do to make it all copasthetic. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. And how about Bob Wordchafter?
So I wasn't here last time, but my only -- my concern is the exit and entrance. Could you put that drawing up, the one that shows the arrows and the access?
So not this drawing? You're talking about another drawing?
Well, I guess it's there.
That one.
They're going to come in. Yeah, there, you can see it. So technically, the exit is using the driveway of Sweet Tomatoes?
It overlaps it.
It does.
Yeah.
But when I go to Sweet Tomatoes, I go all the way in on the left-hand side. I'm turning immediately when I'm making a left turn into Sweet Tomatoes. I'm not coming in where that arrow is. I'm coming in where the out arrow is, and I'm turning immediately into the parking that's right there. So now, I'm also, when I'm exiting, I'm pulling out into the traffic. It's just a little more complicated than this is showing because of that park -- those two parking spaces that sit there at Sweet Tomatoes and that are actually, you know, part of this equation. So.
If I may.
Yes, is that Thad? Go ahead.
It's very rare that I get to authorize somebody, but there's a cross-easement here, and you are authorized to drive on the right-hand side of that shared driveway.
To enter Sweet Tomatoes, is that what you're saying, Thad?
To enter Sweet Tomatoes.
I am authorized, but I don't -- I'm not going to there unless you -- unless there was some way that said, everybody needs to enter where the right arrow is, including those people going to Sweet Tomatoes, that would be fine. But if I didn't even know 824 or 782 existed, and I was just heading to Sweet Tomatoes like I've done for 10 years, I'm going to turn in on the out arrow. And so I'm wondering either, is there some way that we're marking this so that people now know they actually have to take your easement and go on your property to go to Sweet Tomatoes?
Thad, do you want to respond?
Are we just hoping that people will recognize that that's an out flow now?
Thad, do you want to respond to that? I mean, it is a valid issue. I've always turned in to Sweet Tomatoes the same way, where the exit arrow is right now. That's where you turn into Sweet Tomatoes, and then you go left. So what's going to happen, and it's not going to be, you know, a huge amount of traffic, but the residents of the building, for example, of the rear building, who are parked in their parking lot, they will come out and they will be exiting, following that exit arrow. They're going to have to stop to let the, you know, stop to let the people coming into Sweet Tomatoes enter. There's a, again, it may not be huge volume, but there is a kind of traffic conflict there. So do you have a solution for that?
When you've driven in on the wrong side of the shared driveway, have you ever had to stop because somebody's coming out on the right side of the shared driveway?
Well, we're not talking about before. We're talking about the future, where there'll be greater occupancy of the rear building.
I mean, I don't understand how before this meeting, how before reviewing these plans, you even knew that there was a property line anywhere here.
One may not know. You know, the person who's driving into Sweet Tomatoes probably doesn't know that. And possibly, the future occupants of the building won't really know. What we're asking is, there does seem to be an issue in the conflict in traffic, a potential conflict in traffic flow, even with the shared access, and we're asking for a solution. Because I think what the board is wanting to do, the board would like to, you know, give you the go-ahead on this plan, but there are still some issues.
Yeah, I'm thinking that you solve it by painting those arrows onto the cement in big, bold yellow or something so that everybody can see that's where you enter.
Okay. I'd like to recognize Leslie. Is it Schneberger?
Yes, Leslie Schneberger, architect for the project.
Yes, and she's the architect for this.
Those arrows are being painted, and the letter from Merrill in support reiterated that they appreciate the striping and the painting that's going to be happening with the repaving. So I think there was a misunderstanding. There is going to be clarification of the new traffic flow in this area.
Okay. Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
And, yes, go ahead, Tom.
Tom Gagin, I just have a footnote, and that is about the apparent conflict in traffic patterns.
Sure.
The business that's happening on 784, 782, may be at a peak time that is different than the business activity for Sweet Tomatoes.
Yeah, but.
So I'm just trying to point out that that conflict may not be as great an issue as the board anticipates. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah. I think you resolve it by making it very clear where people are supposed to drive. And that was my concern, so you've answered it for me.
Did you have any other points? So, Arthur, yes.
Just some follow-up pieces. I can understand what some of the other board members are saying, and actually bring up good points. There is an easement that I guess Sweet Tomatoes is granting to 782, 784. Is the reciprocal, though, the other way, where 782, 784 now needs to grant an easement rights for Sweet Tomatoes to be using your entrance to access their property? Because if you're going to stripe it the way you're suggesting, Bob, and I agree with you, that that makes sense, that there has to be traffic flow. It's a shared driveway, really, for both properties. That means there needs -- and since it's right on a property line, that means there needs to be a shared easement both ways, reciprocal. Is that possible?
This is Thad Eldridge again. So Attorney Riley used to own this building, and it was his signature on both cross-easements that established the shared right-of-way between the two properties that's been in existence for -- before Bill moved down to Crawl Road.
So, Thad, you're saying that there is a shared easement that's been in existence for some time?
Okay.
So it might be nice to produce that and writing a copy for the board and for the file. Yeah. Arthur, did you have more points?
Yeah, one other thing. So if the board is leaning toward approving this, I would like to suggest a condition, though. If the ZBA does not approve that 10-foot offset to allow those six parking places, I would say that that's a condition. They need to get all six of those and all 15. So if the board agrees with that, I think the onus is going to be on the applicant then to deal with this.
Okay. Yes, we could certainly add that as a condition. Yes. And we could certainly add the request for the written documentation of the shared easement. We don't need to add it as a condition, but we can request it in the letter we send to the applicant that that documentation is provided for the file. Is that acceptable to the board? Yeah. Okay. And Bob Dubus, did you have a comment? Otherwise, I think Tom Gagin, have you all right? Warren Chain, did you have more comments or questions?
Yes, this is Warren Chain. I'm glad that the issue of traffic flow has been, I think, wrestled to the ground. That was really going to be one of my issues. I still have issues with the amount of parking spaces there.
Okay.
I don't know that we know how many parking spaces will actually be adequate. All the issues that have been raised, including the submission by the applicant, which I might add, the photographs of all of the parking lots around are quite interesting. But if you take a close look at them, those pictures were taken when there's virtually no cars parked in any of the other surrounding parking lots. There aren't -- I don't know what this is. There's -- must have been mid-February or something. I don't know. But that's really not my point.
Yes.
I have a question, and that is whether we can condition that this plan, that there be assigned parking for the apartments that are in that complex.
Yes.
There are three apartments that ought to be six parking spaces.
Eight.
Eight?
There's four apartments.
There are four apartments?
Yes, because there's one incident on the front building.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, four. That there be eight parking spaces assigned, and that I'm okay with there being the rest of the parking, of 15 spaces or whatever it comes up as. But that would be the issue for the business that's there and their employees. If, as we suspect, there may be a lot more people in that office than, you know, if every office in there has a person in it, there are a lot of cars in there, put it that way. They can go walk down the street or two blocks or three blocks, but if you are a resident there, you ought to be able to park. And I don't know, can that be conditioned? Can we do that?
We can definitely condition assigned, aid assigned parking spaces for the residents of the two buildings.
Only.
Only, yes.
Correct.
We can definitely add that as a condition. We can add as a condition the ZBA approval of the dimensional variance.
Well, I would recommend that we do that. And if that is done, I still have major issues as to whether there will be adequate parking. But if the issue is, if it turns out it is inadequate, it's really the owner of the business that is there that has to deal with employees parking somewhere else. And I'm perfectly okay with that. As Bob has pointed out, there's not a lot of parking in Chatham. So if you have a situation where there's, at times, inadequate parking, well, that's fine, as long as the people that are paying to have an apartment there know that they can park.
Okay.
All right. Other than that, I don't have other comments. I do think, I do appreciate, by the way, that they raised or enlarged, anyway, where the trash is going to be. But it does seem to me that what was there, and I'm not even sure that what is now proposed is really adequate for, you know, three apartments.
Plus a business.
Plus a business. But you can only do what you can do, and I think they've done a lot with trying to make this a very significant improvement to the area that's there. And so as long as it's able to have two assigned parking spaces for every apartment unit. And I think it was also pointed out by the, whether the fire department or police, I forget, fire, saying that none of the storage areas could be designated a, you know. But at any rate, that would be my only comment.
Storage areas.
I think it's a very good plan.
Storage areas could not become bedrooms. Yeah. So I'm going to ask a couple of questions, if I can, of the applicant, although I'm hearing the board is inclined to approve with conditions. But just, can you clarify, specifically, the bylaw requires parking spaces per square footage of space that's available for customer use, but the board does have the discretion to ask for additional spaces if it sees the need. And I'm thinking why the board is seeing the need is you, we don't have the interior floor plans right in front of us, but there were, is it three or four discreet offices in the interior on the first floor of the back building? And so my question is typically, will those offices each be occupied all day, every day, nine to five, you know, by three or four employees, Monday through Friday, nine to five? And then those are three or four additional parking spaces that we have to understand would be required. Also, there's the, we know that the current occupant is the.
Cape Associates.
Cape Associates. It's possible in future there might be another organization who would lease those offices. And again, we have to project that if there are those four separate, is it three or four? I apologize, I don't remember, those discreet offices, that there might be an employee working in each of those, nine to five. So can you give us a picture of that occupancy?
Absolutely. I'm glad you brought it up because it allows me to clarify the earlier information that was the historical parking information. The front building being owned and operated by Cape Associates. This back building is intended to be an extension of their office. And being contractors, every contractor does get their own office, but they're generally out in the field and very rarely actually at their office. Same for client meetings typically are happening at field places or clients' locations rather than at the building itself. So their parking needs are on the low side. However, they are adequate for what is needed for this building by the bylaws. And as a business owner who has an office a little further down with not quite as much parking as I have employees, we use the municipal lots, and it certainly biases my review of potential office locations, as it will for anyone who knows what the regulations of this, you know, what the limitations of this property are.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. So I think, as Warren suggested, if we add the condition that we have assigned parking spaces for the residents of the four apartments, that I believe that's going to be satisfying the board's concern about the number of parking spaces. So, yes.
I think we also have Art's requirement, too, that if the zoning board doesn't.
Oh, yes. Yes, we add that as a condition, too. So we're adding two conditions now, ZBA approval of the dimensional variance, and that we have assigned parking spaces for the, eight assigned parking spaces for the residents of the four apartments. And Katie Donovan has a comment.
Madam Chair, just to confirm, I don't know that it will actually be a variance from the zoning board of appeals.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It actually might be a special permit because the parking spaces already exist in that location.
Thank you.
So I would just caution to utilize approval by the zoning board of appeals and not specific to what the approval would need to be.
All right. Great. Thank you. We will do that, and I apologize for the wrong characterization. Yes, Bob Dubus?
Madam Chairman, should we say something about make sure that the painted arrows or street?
Oh, yes.
Delineation of the two lanes in and out, just so there's no, you know, just don't pay the couple of small arrows, and maybe there should be more than a couple. There should be adequate signage to direct the traffic.
Okay. On the westerly ingress and egress shared, Arthur.
And I think, Bob, you were looking for reciprocal easement for both you.
Yes, but I think that's correct.
That's correct. Well, we should have that, too. We would like to have the documentation that there is actual shared easement between both properties.
Okay. We can add that as a condition? Yes.
Thad Eldridge here, I already emailed documents 13831106 and 13831107 to Michelle and Sarah Clark.
So Thad has emailed that, is that what you're saying? It's a little hard to hear you.
Yes. No, I've emailed the two documents that have the cross-easements.
All right.
I was going to email the town staff.
I think we should still.
Do you want to still add it as a condition?
Yeah, because we don't know until.
Yeah, okay.
We have a chance.
Okay, we'll just understand. Okay. That's fine. So we'll add that condition. So now we're adding one, two, three, we're adding four conditions. One about the documentation of the shared easement, one about the adequate signage and marking of the two-lane ingress and egress on the westerly side, that is, shared ingress and egress, ZBA approval, and also that we have eight clearly marked assigned parking spaces for the residents of the four apartments only, reserved for the residents of the four apartments only. So those are the conditions we're adding to the conditions that are in the staff report. Okay? Then we do also need to determine a performance bond amount if the board so chooses to. Then we do also need to determine a performance bond amount, if the board so chooses to require a performance bond. I'm gonna suggest the amount of $30,000, but I'm going to ask Mr. Dubus for his advice.
Well, normally, we take a partial of what it's gonna cost to do this, and I don't, I don't believe that, I believe that's gonna be quite a large bond. I would suggest 50.
50,000, okay. Any other discussion about the performance bond amount from board members? So we'll go with the higher amount, if that's acceptable to the board.
Only because towards the end, it's gonna be paving and proprietary work like that, and the markings, stuff like that, so make sure we have enough money to do what's needed to be done. Thank you.
Right, so that is a condition, we just, that is in your staff report, and we will add the amount of 50,000 for the performance bond. Before we go to vote, Arthur, I just want to make sure, address your issues about the 16-foot width, that's not for the entirety of the westerly vehicular access, but just, what is it, it's on the northern end, correct?
Yes, but it's at the utility pole. I'd like to see if Thad can go back and even get a foot or two more. If he can get 18 feet in there, I think he's, he's close enough.
Yeah, so that's what I'm asking, I'm asking for a solution to that problem.
If he can revisit that one last time, and we'll see in the, in the final, but let's just leave it as it is right now.
And are you gonna be comfortable approving this with conditions?
Mm-hmm.
And simply a request to revisit that?
That's correct, because I think he can get a foot or two more, and that probably is close enough.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, okay. Any other concerns, comments, questions from the board before we go to vote, to approve this with conditions as we've stated and summarized? Katie?
Madam Chair, just, I believe Ms. Gibbs has her hand up.
Oh, okay, sorry, I did not see that. Yes, Ms. Gibbs, please go ahead, and I apologize for not seeing your hand up.
All right, yeah, I just had a comment on the parking, and I'm going by memory from the last meeting, but the way the parking is calculated, you look at the public use area. My understanding, if recollection serves me, that there's about 3,000 square feet that is going to be office space, commercial use, whatever. And that the number used to determine that amount of parking was only 445, maybe, that was gonna be public use. I don't know how it can be determined that 2,500 square feet is never gonna be used, accessible to the public. It seems to me that when you develop a property, you have to consider who the tenants are gonna be. And today, they may be the owner of the building, but tomorrow, they could get new tenants in there, you know, to generate revenue. Every real estate office, every interior design firm, architects, lawyers firms, and developers, all have clients that come in and sit with them. And that, that has not been taken into consideration. They're saying there will be no clients sitting in those offices. And so, I find it hard to believe that you can approve a property and parking that runs with the land, not the owner, and what their initial intentions are, and not provide sufficient parking down the road, should the tenants change and have different needs. And again, I said it last time, and, you know, to say that you would approve something knowing that there is, there could be insufficient parking, so they can use public parking. We actually have a public parking solutions task force, because we have no parking in town. There are not 450 spaces available, they're all full. And, and to say that people can, and it was said last time, that they can park over near the post office, they can park at Oyster Pond, they can park at the community center, those are all used up. And I, I don't think you should knowingly approve a project when there is great potential that there will be insufficient parking on the property, and then only add to the problem that we currently have in town, where we cannot get parking spaces to do our daily business as residents, because all the parking is full, and this is just adding to it. I don't know how you can prove a development where that could be the case. I don't believe that only 450 square feet of 3,000 is going to be for public use. That just doesn't make sense with the types of businesses that we have in this town that are all client-driven. You know, they're not gonna be meeting in a restaurant, they're gonna be meeting in an office for over design plans, legal documents, whatever, the business is at hand. So, I just want to go on record that I, I think it's really a little tone-deaf to say, well, they can figure it out, the tenants can figure it out, and there's always, you know, go park someplace publicly, when that is one of the biggest problems we have facing this town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine. I think Mr. Gagin had a comment.
Tom Gagin, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion that the board approve this applicant with the appropriate conditions that had been stated from the other board members, and had been repeated by the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gagin. If there's no further discussion from the public, the board, the board will go to vote. Are there any other hands raised? I don't see any.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, we have a motion before the board in a second. I didn't see any other comments, so let's do our roll call vote, Arts Prue?
Arts Prue, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Bob Wurchafter?
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern, I also approve this formal site plan as submitted with the conditions as stated and summarized. Thank you very much.
For everyone, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to our next agenda item, which is 200 Meeting House Road. And this is a proposed demolition of two greenhouses on the site, and proposed construction of a 9,600-square-foot self-storage warehouse. There is an existing front retail building with one-bedroom apartment on the site to remain. The applicant has actually requested a continuance for this matter to August 8th. There are issues with the use and, and the proprieties of the use, because the retail use for this zone, zoning has to be incidental to, and the prior retail use wasn't incidental to the greenhouses. So there are some issues that need to be sorted out regarding the usage. So the applicant has requested a continuance to August 8th, so our vote would simply be to vote to grant that continuance. So, do I have a motion to that effect?
I move that we accept the continuance.
Okay, thank you, do I have a second?
Tom Gagin, second.
We could wait for Mr. Dubus to return. Okay, great, so we have a vote on the floor, and it is seconded, but I think it's best to wait for Mr. Dubus to return. So we'll just take a few minutes break, if that's all right, to continue with the voting. So we're just wait, we're waiting for your return to vote, we have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded to continue the matter of 28 Meeting House Road to the August 8th meeting, and this is at the applicant's request. So Arts Prue?
Arts Prue, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Bob Wurchafter?
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern, I also approve that we continue this matter to August 8th. Next item on the agenda is we also have 1218 Main Street, Bob Dubus will be recusing himself from this vote. This is a proposed change of use from Retail Market to Hair Salon, and again, the applicant has requested a continuance to our August 8th meeting. So, may I have a vote to continue this matter to August 8th? I mean, may I have a motion, I'm sorry.
We continue this to August 8th.
And may I have a second to that motion?
I'm Gagin, second.
All right, so let's do a roll call vote, Arts Prue?
Arts Prue, approve.
And Bob Wurchafter?
I approve.
And Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
And Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern, I also approve, and Bob Dubus has recused himself from this matter. All right, next item on the agenda is a request for a recommendation from the zoning board of appeals, and this is regarding the construction of a driveway in the Conservancy District. Do I have anyone presenting for this matter?
Yes, good evening, Sean Riley with Coastal Engineering.
All right, please go ahead, Sean.
Yes, it's just a minor reconfiguration of the driveway. As the driveway comes in towards the garage, there's a minor section that we're reconfiguring on the upper left-hand corner of the driveway. If you could just zoom in to the, close to the house, the upper left-hand corner of the driveway. It's right above where it says staging area, close up to the house. Yep, just right up in that corner there, there's a little, yeah, exactly, that little piece is the addition of a pervious, peystone section, and some pavers for some head-in parking, so they can get two head-in parking spaces. This is within the flood zone, so that's why it's before you to give a recommendation to the, to the zoning board for the work to add that, that peystone section. We're gonna be just shifting the cobbles around. This did already receive a order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. So with that, I'll open it up, any questions you may have?
Thank you, and can I just ask you, before I go to questions, what is the total square footage of the expansion of the driveway?
Sure, let me just take a quick peek at that. It's about 85 square feet.
85 square feet added to the driveway, okay.
Yeah.
So Arts Prue, did you have a question for Sean?
Yes, the plan that I have also shows an expansion to the other side of the driveway. So, I'm confused by what it is that is before our board for a recommendation, and what the ZBA is actually reviewing, because that's, that's a much more significant expansion on the other side. It says, "Proposed driveway modification, C note." And I read the note, and references all sorts of information on a plan, October 26, 2021, which was not provided. And then these talk about details associated with it, and none of those details were provided either, so I'm, I'm missing information, and I'm confused by the information that I'm seeing.
I apologize.
Sean, can you comment? I have to admit, I also was a bit confused by the plans.
Yeah, and I apologize, I was unaware that we even had this meeting. Mike Ford just called me at the last minute, and I found out that we were on the agenda, so I apologize for not being fully prepared for this. And I also took this over from another project manager that just retired, so, yes, there is expansion to the southern side as well, by the front door. Let me just give you that area as well. And that as well is to be peystone. Just bear with me for a second.
Yeah, okay.
Try it again. It's about 210 square feet to the south side of the driveway.
So 210 plus 85.
Correct.
Yeah. Any other?
And that's to be a... It's a mix of peystone, and now it's crush shell.
All right. Arthur, do you have some more comments, some questions, yes?
I took a look out there. There's, there's multiple staging areas associated with this driveway, so I'm wondering why we're, there's an expand, and an additional expansion for additional driveway associated. If you take a look on the plan that I see, there's a second staging area, which has a blocked-off retaining wall around it, easy, can have two, two-plus cars that could be in there, so it seems like there's a lot of expansion going on here for, for a driveway, and I'm not sure it's to what, to any benefit. I mean, the property is nicely landscaped, I mean, it's, it's pristine condition, I was just raising the question, that's all.
That it's, you're questioning whether it's necessary expansion, yeah?
That's exactly right, because if you take a look at the property, it probably can park, including in the driveway itself, you probably could park at least eight cars.
All right.
Before you even got to the edge of the roadway.
Yes.
It's, it's an extensive driveway.
And these matters come before the board, because the bylaw basically prohibits the construction of a driveway in the Conservancy District or the flood plain. And so, we're granting approval that it's okay to grant, to build a little bit if there is no other adequate means of access. And so that's why it comes before us. So we need to decide whether this is necessary, because there's no alternative adequate means of access. So, just a reminder to the board of the, of the purpose of the bylaws, it's written as I understand it. Yes, Mr. Dubus?
Madam Chairman, Sean, is, is the rest of the driveway pervious or impervious?
It's pervious.
Other questions from the board, or comments from Sean, and comments for Sean? Mr. Chain, yes?
Yeah, this is Warren Chain. I was out today, and again, I think it's a pristine property. I think if we were being asked to approve the entire driveway, we probably would have said, "You gotta be kidding me, because it's gigantic," as, as Art has, has said. But it's beautifully done, it's pervious, and it's very logical what is being proposed here. There's kind of a choke point in the library, in the, in the driveway, so you really can't have two cars abreast right there. And all they're really doing is trading some grass for a little peystone. It's still pervious, it doesn't affect the flow of water at all, and it dramatically improves the functionality of the, of the driveway. So I actually don't have an issue at all with it, notwithstanding the bylaw. It seems to me that it is something that would have been proposed in the first place, had they really thought it through, and if the large driveway was approved, I have no problem with this minor improvement, as long as it is peystone, as long as it's, because it's just trading grass for peystone. So, that's, that's my personal feeling, and I can square it with the bylaw myself.
Okay, I should point out, we don't know when the initial driveway was constructed, it might have been constructed prior to the drafting of this particular sentence in the bylaw, which says that in the Conservancy District, "The construction and maintenance of a driveway or roadway of minimum legal and practical width, where no alternative means of access from an established way is available." So that's what is allowed in the Conservancy District. I have to say, it's quite clear that this does not meet that requirement, it's an expansion of an already large driveway. That being said, it's not as huge, not an enormous amount of square footage that's being added, it's all pervious material, so, yeah. So, Bob Wurchafter, do you have a comment?
I agree with you, Madam Chairman, that the bylaw is very clear. And if, if there was no access, then they're allowed to build a, the smallest legal driveway possible. They've got way more than the smallest legal driveway They've got way more than the smallest legal driveway possible already. And I don't see any reason to go against the bylaw that the town passed recently because we're trying to protect these areas. So I totally see no reason to accept this.
All right, any other comments from the board? We can go to vote.
If I could just rebut that.
Is that Sean? Yeah, go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, I mean, the intent of the bylaw was to prevent or limit the amount of impervious coverage that would prevent the infiltration of stormwater should a flood event occur, or to speed up or move water through a paved or hard surface. This is all pervious. It essentially serves the same function to absorb the water that the grass does at this point. So I think that was the intent of the bylaw, not to limit what people can use their property for.
Well, I strongly disagree with that.
Yeah, I think both Bob and I, go ahead, Bob, sorry.
I think if there was an issue within the buffer zone, that the Conservation Commission wouldn't have approved it.
This is Kathryn, I'm going to make a comment. I think both Bob and I were involved in the drafting of that particular bylaw, and there was a lot of input from the community, as I recall. And I do understand the intent was actually not to have any more driveways constructed. The intent was exactly what the bylaw says. So I would have to disagree with you, Mr. Riley, on that point as well. But the board should consider this, and we should, unless there's other comments or considerations, we should go to vote. Yes, Bob Dubus?
Sean, is this all within the 100-foot or the 50-foot?
It's within the 50 to 100-foot.
So, yeah, it's between the two?
It's between the two, correct.
Okay, and we've seen, over the past, we've seen quite a bit of activity in this 50 to 100-foot zone. And for 300 square feet, and it's a, it is a functional and attractive driveway, I'm inclined to go with it.
Okay, that's good. Arthur?
This is Art Spru. I think the map that I'm looking at deals with something slightly different. It identifies a flood zone AE elevation 11. And that means that that entire area is within the flood zone. That means the driveway is, right? So the 50-foot to 100-foot is a non-issue associated with this because the element that we're talking about here is this entire driveway is in the flood zone. So the bylaw, as was referenced by you, Kathryn, that is essentially, you're trying to get around that, and I don't see how that's possible based on this unless it's approved by the ZBA. And I think I'm going to need to go ahead and support what Bob and Kathryn are saying, that this is something that we shouldn't start a precedent on. If this is not the intent of the bylaw, then the bylaw needs to be changed. But as I'm reading it, and as you clarified it, Kathryn, I believe no expansion in this particular site at this location, as defined in the flood zone, should not be expanded.
Thank you, Arthur. All right, so what we're voting on is whether to send a positive recommendation to the ZBA regarding the expansion of this driveway in the Conservancy District. And maybe what's best to do is just to put forth the vote, as we do in the positive. And if you disagree, you vote no. And it's possible that we'll be sending a split vote to the ZBA. That seems pretty obvious. So, but we'd need a motion, yes?
I move that we...
I need, wait a minute, I need some clarification.
Yes.
It is the intent of the bylaw to not build a driveway or expand a driveway in, what do we?
In the Conservancy District or floodplain. And we combined those districts when we created that bylaw. And to my recollection, that was clearly the intent, was that we really minimize or eliminate any new construction or expansion of driveways.
So by the bylaw, we can't vote positive on this? Is that, that is what it boils down to?
That's what three of us are saying, yeah.
And as much as I don't think it would hurt anything, we literally have to vote no.
That's what's been said, yeah. Mr. Gagin, yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with those who think that the bylaws that we create with a lot of work and effort must be adhered to. Otherwise, the bylaws are ineffective. And we get into the same situation with this board when we create bylaws. I think we would probably be upset for the two years we spent on one bylaw, and then find out that it's worthless. Thank you.
All right, I wouldn't go so far, I used to say it's worthless, Mr. Gagin, but anyway. I wouldn't go so far to say it's worthless, but our efforts, yeah. Our efforts are not worthless.
I did.
Oh, I see what you're saying. You're saying this one.
That's not what I...
Oh, I understand. I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. I'm sorry. Okay, I get it. Yes, you're right. Sorry. All right, so why don't we move to our vote? And can I have, and we'll make the vote in the positive, and then, of course, if you feel we need to send a negative recommendation, you have to vote no. So may I have a motion?
Well, I move that we send a positive recommendation to the Board of Appeals, Zoning Board of Appeals, for this driveway.
All right, and a second to that motion?
Art Spru, second.
All right, let's do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, no.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, no.
Bob Wurchafter?
Bob Wurchafter, no.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, no.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, no.
Mrs. Kathryn Halpern, I also vote no. So we cannot send a positive recommendation. We have to, in fact, send a negative recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals. All right, and then for your information, also in your packet, it was this wonderful letter about the nomination of the South Chatham Village Historic District to the State Historic Preservation, to the National Register. So that's for your information. Next item on the agenda is the reorganization of the board. So as we do every year, we want to have a vote, an elect chair, vice chair, and clerk of the planning board. Yes, Mr. Gagin?
Tom Gagin, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to remind the board that I made somewhat of an impassioned plea about boards and committees in general. I believe that term limits, although there's nothing in our bylaws to quantify that or codify that, I do think it's important that we think about rotations within boards and committees, and that we try to share that workload. It's quite an experience being a chair or vice chair. So with that said, I would want to reiterate that rotating between and among the board members for offices is important to me.
Okay, good. Arthur?
Yes, I've had conversations with Kathryn and others about this. This is going to be a challenging year coming up. We've seen some of it from the debates that we've had in the last several meetings that we have. We have a lot on the agenda. We have an absence of a planning administrator right now, or planner right now. To me, that's a major issue with supporting what we do here. I think that has hurt advancement of many things that we've been trying to do. But in my discussions with Kathryn, and I mentioned it at the last meeting, that I would do what I could to help support, to get some research done, do some due diligence associated with some of the things that are coming up. But at the same time, I also think continuity for this particular issue would be best, especially with the transition with a new planner that's hopefully coming on board. I think maybe later next month, I hope. So I'd like to make, and I've talked about this with Kathryn, where she would retain it for one more year. She would like to do that, and I support that. I would prefer that she be a continuation to close that issue out, these sensitive issues. I think she would be a better leader associated with that than I am. I know my personality associated with this, and it would be best if I was a support person in a continuing role. So that would be a nomination I'd like to make.
Thank you, Arthur. Tom?
Arthur, could you be a little clearer? What I hear you say, that maybe you're self-nominating as the vice chair, and that you're nominating or supporting Kathryn as the chair to continue. Is that accurate?
If you would like to nominate me for vice chair, I would accept that. My preference is to stay in that role. I think that I can be much more effective in it. I can do a lot of due diligence that may not be done by the chair or even the planner, but I could support them in a much more flexible way. Once you get into that chair position, you get dragged away from a lot of the things. And I think there needs to be some research done on this to make us all comfortable as a board. We made note that we were not comfortable with information that we were receiving. And I volunteered last time to say, I would commit to making sure that we can get that information. Now, if I have to reach out to the attorney, or reach out to a planner, or reach out to whoever, another consultant, I'd be happy to do that. I have a good network of resources outside of what you have in here. But that's going to take time away from what you would have to do with all the other business. I would also suggest that if we do move ahead with this, and we're going to get into some discussions about all the other things that we have, I think we should consider adding a third meeting sometime during the month for a period of time to address just, you know, some of this planning and zoning-related information, so we can get it off our plate. I think it's getting to be a real burden on us, and the sooner that we can get through it, the better. But I think that that process would work better if we just continued this for one more year. That's my recommendation.
Mr. Gagin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not disagree with you. There is a lot of work to be done here, and the burden of that falls on the chair and the vice chair. The only covenant that I would caution in terms of being in town for a period of years is kind of the same argument that other boards and commissions make year after year. And we wind up with people in the position, good, bad, or indifferent, as the chair, vice chair, or officers, that won't leave. No one wants the job, and they continue for 10, 12 years. That's what I'm not in favor of. And if I could have some reassurance, because I heard this argument from this board and its offices last year, it's just a repeat of the same argument. While I understand that we're in the middle of a lot of things, that the continuity of that thought makes this board perform smoothly, more smoothly. And that if another individual were to become an officer, that there'd be some catch-up or leg time. And that's not to the advantage of this particular board. Is there any action that would be agreed to for next year that would allow me to feel comfortable with maintaining the present officers?
This is Kathryn. I mean, I would just respond that we have the reorganization of the board annually. So the issue will come up again next year, and we'll be open to vote. I will just express the personal, what's the word, personal wish, that, you know, I've been chair for a few, four years now, and I would continue for one more year. And that's what I would say. And essentially, to help with the transition to the new planner. I think that's a big issue, that we're moving to a new planner, yeah.
Madam Chair, Tom Gagin, I appreciate that, because I think you're getting to the point that I have. It's not personal from my point. It is an issue for me in all forms of government. And that is, people just stay there, good, bad, or whatever. And there's no mechanism by which we rotate. One expression is, "Bring in some new blood." But have a mechanism by which we agree that while the issues in front of this board are important, that we don't make the same reason, rationale each year, that we just continue. So if you're suggesting or agreeing to that you would not want to serve as a chair the following year in July, when we take this vote, that would give me a lot of relief that we can get some new individuals or new people involved, actively involved. I think we have a board, and I'll blow a little smoke here. I think we have some reasonably dedicated people. And I keep telling myself that my job as a member of this board is to do what is in favor of or in support of what the citizens of Chatham want to see and how our town is going to continue. That's a little self-serving, but that's really why we're on boards and committees. So I would welcome that response.
Yeah, I think I've already said it. Yeah, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I move that we vote to retain you as the chair, Art as the vice chair, and Roger as the clerk.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor, a nomination on the floor. Do we have a second to the nomination?
I'd like to second that, Madam Chair. Tom Gagin?
Thank you, Mr. Gagin, so...
I have some correspondence before we vote on it, though.
Yes, please go ahead.
I kind of agree with what's going on. We're under a lot of pressure. We have big changes going on here. We also have a workload that was massed upon us that's going to be very interesting to put forth and go through and come out with a positive response that everybody will accept. So I, and I've been on the longest, so I really am not one to say about the time served. But I think that we should stay the course for this year. And if you're going to add a third date, please make it after August.
Oh, you mean like a third meeting in the month? Yeah, okay. Got it. Yes, we have a motion, we have a nomination on the floor, and Warren?
Well, is there discussion on the motion?
It has been seconded. Okay, so we just need to vote now. So Bob Wurchafter?
I vote yes.
And Art Spru?
Art Spru, yes.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, yes.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, yes.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, yes.
And this is Kathryn. I will vote yes. All right, so we've done the reorganization of the board. Thank you all. And it will be a busy year, but we're going to try our best to make it really fruitful. Yes?
Madam Chair, I think in light of what we are saying collectively as board members, that you and Art have to reach out to other board members with even menial jobs. I'm retired. I don't know what the heck that means. But theoretically, it means that I have more time to do things with proper notice. And as Bob Dubus has pointed out, the addition of a third meeting in any one month probably should be approved by the board immediately so that we can understand and plan for what we want to do personally. But please encourage you to reach out to the other board members for help and support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gagin. And also, I'll just comment in our informal conversations. I very much welcome Arthur's support and his professional expertise. And I want to work more hand-in-hand together, chair and vice chair, as we move forward. Because a lot of these issues do involve a lot of, you know, extensive due diligence, and Art is really great. is really great at that. Go ahead, Arthur.
Tom, that's exactly my intent. I think that, I felt the same thing that the other board members did, that there was some lack of information. And the idea was, it's just not for me to collect it and hold it. It's my idea is to actually share it. And if it's necessary to talk to people, I'll be happy to do it, whether it's one-on-one with a board member or with another consultant or legal counsel or whatever. I'm looking for avenues, and that's just a suggestion about the additional meeting. I think the board has to vote on that. As far as I'm concerned, the board directs everything that we should be doing. It's not just a one-person decision. So I welcome your suggestion, though.
Yeah, good.
Thank you.
Warren?
Madam Chairman, Warren Chain. Tom had mentioned term limits last year, and again, it came up in his comments this year. I think I'm very 100% behind what's being proposed. I think it's not only useful, and it's going to be almost essential if we're going to try and achieve what we all hope to achieve in the next year. But I just have the question, if this board really was in favor of term limits, how would that be empowered? I mean, is it within the power of this board to decide we will have term limits? Or is it a select board decision, since we're appointed by the select board, or what?
I'm going to ask Katie to comment on that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my suggestion would be that since this board does not have rules and regulations that govern how they operate, that they would create those rules and regulations that would potentially incorporate something like that into a document that could be followed for the future.
Good. Yeah. Mr. Gagin, yes?
Several years ago, as I'm getting older, the years go by more quickly, within the handbook, I actually talked to some of the administrators about forming a committee to do that specifically. So it's not just this board, but it comes a general policy of what the town offices and the various boards and commissions would have an idea of how that's run prior to getting involved with the board or commission. I believe if Katie's right, that we could at some point dedicate a little bit of time and talk about what we would like to accomplish. It could be unique to this board, and that position could be made known for the future for members of the board. So I see that as a positive way to move forward. I hope other boards and committees would follow on our line, but I think that's too much of the apple to bite off at this time. So if we could do that, it certainly shouldn't be a priority, because we have enough things to address now. But thank you for that suggestion, Katie.
Great. All right. So if we're settled, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a discussion. Katie Donovan has an update for us on the process of hiring an independent consultant to help us consider the draft bylaw for the runway protection zone zoning. And at, I think it was at our last meeting, the board voted that we did want to look into hiring an independent aviation consultant, whether that is an aviation consultant, an aeronautics engineer, or an aviation lawyer. That may need to be determined, but Katie does have an update for us on that process. So let Katie go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So since the last meeting, again, as the chair stated, at the last meeting, I had indicated that I would bring an update at this meeting on the process and how we would go about hiring a consultant to guide the planning board through a process. I've had conversations with our town manager and with our finance director, thinking, you know, specifically about a scope of services and funding sources and how we will identify funds to be able to make this happen. What we need to do first is come up with a scope of services. And my suggestion would be that the board come up with questions that they feel that need to be answered. My thought is that the first step to this process would be that the board has a work session regarding the RPZ, so that we can determine what the, again, what, you know, what questions you have. And from those questions, we can then develop a scope of services. At that point in time, based on the scope of services, we could determine whether or not we can fund that project based on what's requested. The other item is that we would need to determine, are you looking, you know, is the board looking for an aviation engineer? Are you looking for an attorney that specializes in aviation? And so my suggestion would be is we start with a work session to start to determine what the questions are that the board has that we need to answer, and then what is the specific intent of a consultant? Help us to develop a scope of services, and then we can move on from that point. So that is my suggestion at this point in time.
Mr. Gagin, did you have an answer, comments?
Thank you. I do have some comments, and I think I passed these on to Katie in an email on July 15. My question about the process that we're going to be put through seems to be administratively laborious. My question was, and it hasn't been answered, is what is being asked of the planning board to have a consultant, however we describe that, consultant services? Is this the same process and procedure that the airport commissioners followed when they hired a consultant? I'd like to have a parity between what this board is able to do and what the airport commission, asking for the same thing, were able to do and approved. I see this as a long, drawn-out process that only adds another layer. So what I'm hearing from Katie is there's no funds approved until we go through a process that's going to take a lot of time. So again, I go back to my question. Are we, the planning board, following in the prototype of what was required by the airport commissioners when they hired a specialist? Thank you.
I think I'm going to let Katie answer that question.
Sure. My understanding is that the airport commission, through town staff, issued an RFP for consultant services, not specifically for the RPZ. Gale Associates is under a master service agreement, is I believe the term that was used. So it was a much more broad scale than looking at a specific item. And so because of the nature of what the, and we can certainly provide the board with a copy of that request for proposals that was done, so that the board can see it, but I think it's a much more broad range of services that's being provided to the town and to the airport commission than what is being requested by the planning board, just based on the conversation that we had at the last meeting. My understanding is that this board will be looking for guidance and information, but not necessarily, again, Gale Associates was hired to do a master plan. That was part of that whole RFP. But it's this master service agreement that they're under that isn't, I don't believe it's the same as what this planning board is looking for, a consultant to guide them through a process on a zoning bylaw amendment.
Go ahead, Mr. Gagin.
Thank you. So what you've just told me, Katie, is that we are going to go through a different process, a much more complicated process. And I see no parity between what the airport commission did, whatever scope they had. And they didn't have to submit questions. They didn't have to vet a particular individual, and that's what we've been asked to do. So I'd like this board to have the same treatment from the administration in this town, so that we can move forward a little bit more expeditiously than going through all these layers of administration, to pick someone. We can have a process for that among the board and actually have someone that we can refer to when we get into the serious matters about trying to approve the bylaw overlay district that's being proposed by the airport commission. I believe that we would benefit greatly by having someone that we could turn to that knows more technically about what we're asked to be involved with than maybe any one of us as an individual member would have access to. Also, if we did that, we could then take answers from the airport commission, as they're being asked, and bounce those answers against this expert of choice and see if there's any need for clarification. So again, I see we're going on different paths, and I don't approve of it.
Well, I've been an engineer for 50 years, Tom, and that's the way municipalities do it. I can't count the number of times where I have gone before different municipalities for services. There could be a variety of different services. It's usually a multiple shortlist that you get quizzed on and then interviewed, and then you go through a definitely selection process through the committee that they establish. It's, every town that I know of that we've gone before does it the same way. When I was on my previous planning board in another town, we hired both a planner as a consultant and also a civil engineer as a consultant to provide on a regular basis master-type agreement, like Katie was referred to. But we went through the same process. It's just the way municipalities do it, period. I don't think it's, I don't think what Katie stated here is anything different than I've experienced with working with municipalities as part of way they hire. And I can't say it's good or bad. It's the way they do it. And unless you define what you're looking for, as Katie is suggesting, which is flushing out our points and our issues, we can list all the things that we would want this consultant to provide, and then they need to provide some credentials to show that they're the right candidate for it. Because if you hire a civil engineer and doesn't know anything about airport, then you really have got the wrong person. So we need to see the qualifications. The only way to see qualifications is you've got to come up with a list of all the things that we're interested in. So I think the first part of it is for us to get together, list all the things that we have issues and concerns with. We may not have answers to any of them. That's okay. That's what we're trying to flush out as a group. But that's my experience, though.
Can I?
Yes.
And I apologize if I missed the discussion that this was brought up, but it seems to me, I don't understand what we're being asked to do. We're not being, my impression was, we were not being asked to write the bylaw, but to give feedback on the bylaw that is being, was being produced by the airport commission. So I guess if we're writing the bylaw from scratch, then regardless of which way it works, we're going to have to work very closely with the airport commission to understand what's going on. And I'm a little concerned, Tom, that you're trying to set up an alternative position and expertise rather than a cooperative one. And so to the extent that we need more information, the town needs more information. I don't know that the planning board needs to hire this expert. I would rather get together with the airport commission and others in town and figure out what we, I like Art's suggestion that we come up with all our questions, and let's figure out which, who can answer them. And it may be that we already have that expertise. So I miss that discussion on why we needed another expert, when there are at least 25 different areas of concern here, and I doubt there is one person that has a handle on all 25 of them. And so at this point, I wouldn't be able to write a statement of work unless we were going to hire a giant engineering, aviation firm that had 20 different experts. It'd be like trying to hire a lawyer as for, "Get me through the rest of my life. I just want you to be the lawyer." I mean, that's sort of what we're, you know, at this point, that's all we can do. So I don't, maybe you discussed it last time, but I don't understand why we're doing this right now.
Okay. I don't know, Katie, if you want to address this, but I just wanted to clarify where we are in the process in terms of what Bob said. The airport commission drafted a bylaw, kind of in the matter that a citizen's petition would be drafted. They took it upon themselves to draft a bylaw, and that did come before us. And we, the role that the planning board plays in a situation like that is a little different than if we sponsor the bylaw. Our role was to hold the public hearing and then to vote either to recommend it or not to recommend it to town meeting, which we did. And the board, I think almost, I think, no, it wasn't a unanimous vote. There were some abstentions, and one positive vote, but we did not recommend it, essentially. And so based on that, the select board decided not to include it on the warrant for annual town meeting 2022. And instead, they essentially remanded it to the planning board. They remanded the matter to us. We do have a memo on file that next time we discuss this, we'll have it in your packets. But the select board remanded the draft, proposed draft zoning bylaw for the runway protection zone, remanded it to the planning board, and requested that what the planning board do now is that we take it on as the sponsor and that we come up with a bylaw that could receive broad acceptance in the community and that could be put on the warrant for a future annual town meeting. So that was the request that came to us from the select board. So we are dealing with a somewhat different situation now, that is, the ball was, if I could use some slang, they put the ball back in our court. And if I could just say that what we have done as a board, when we've wanted to put forth any proposed zoning bylaw amendment, is it's always a very much community-driven process. It's a grassroots process, because what the fact of the matter is, the planning board doesn't make the decision. The select board won't make the decision. The town of Chatham makes the decision, because it has to get passed by two-thirds vote at annual town meeting. So we work with the community extensively, as you all know, and sometimes that is a rather laborious process. But we work with the community extensively because it does need to be a community process. So that's what I would envision, you know. So we're just taking the first steps in seeing how do we move forward with this process now.
Okay, so that helps. Thank you. That does explain the need for a consultant. I'm just not sure we're ready to, you know, based on what you just said, I think we need to do a little bit more talking like Art was suggesting to figure out what we need before we hire someone.
I think I've got Tom and Art, who would both like to speak. Who wants to go first? Tom, do you want to go first? Go ahead.
Well, I'm older.
Okay.
My understanding now is, and I wanted to review the April 22 letter that was sent to this board, because I find that I have read it multiple times, and I'm kind of confused about the direction that this board is being given. What I'm hearing here now is that it's now the job of the planning board to draft a bylaw. We voted, discussed prior to this, that the airport commission was to write the bylaw. So that's confusing. And if we are going to write a bylaw, why don't we need some expertise to help us do that? The vote that we took on March 14 of last year was overwhelmingly against supporting the airport commission. The vote specifically was one yes, three no's, and two abstentions, which sent a very clear message politically to the parties in control, the force majeure, that there's something wrong, something that we didn't see that we could approve. My personal stuff, Bob, has to do with what's best for the town of Chatham. I did support, and I did talk at town meeting, and I also heard what you said at town meeting. Those are positions that this board shouldn't be taking as members of the board. And when I spoke at town meeting, I thought I was very careful to mention that I was not representing the board, planning board, and I was not acting with any support from the planning board. But my understanding, going back to the March 14 meeting, that we as a board did not support that bylaw because we had a lot of questions that were unanswered. And that's what I'm trying to get at. How do we get those answers? I have a bias, and everybody knows my bias, is that when I've asked questions... is that when I've asked questions over the airport, specifically its chair, the answers don't come forward. I can give you specifics, but that's gonna take up time. All I want is a mechanism by which this board, these members, can get at what we need to know if in fact we're gonna now be responsible for writing a bylaw, particularly a bylaw because we have a track record that's gonna be approved at town meeting. I mean, that's the, that's the end-all of what all our effort's going to be. So I know this board does a lot of work, particularly around the ADU, and we vetted everything we possibly could and took in a lot of input from town, from meetings that we had, and from people of both persuasions in terms of being for or against something. I think that's the process that I'm trying to head for, not a personal vendetta against an airport. I have nothing against the airport. I don't want it shut down. I don't want anything. Again, my personal, not as a board member, was to talk about safety. And that was what I think this board, in terms of drafting a bylaw, to add to the safety possibilities that we see from a consultant that can really point out not only what happens at our specific airport, but someone who's had experience with other airports, and we can draw from that experience. Yeah, maybe we need 10,000 lawyers and attorneys and engineers, but that's not what I'm getting at. I just want a go-to person that we all feel comfortable with to answer the questions or respond to answers that we're receiving from the appropriate authorities. That's, that's my, that's my plea. Thank you.
Yeah. Well said. And I think that's what came up at the previous meeting that you missed, and the board did vote on it. And it wasn't unanimous, but I think most of the board agreed that an independent consultant for the planning board on this matter would be useful.
Well, well, based on, on the, the new direction that we've been given, I, I take that back. I thought we were, we were, well, I didn't understand that we were in charge of this, and therefore I, I totally agree that we need some, we had the commission helping us with the ADU. We need somebody in a similar manner if that's, so I, I'm changing my statement that we don't need someone. We do. So I'm just not sure we're ready yet. So.
Right. And what Katie came back with us to give us tonight was an update on what she needs to know from us. She needs a definition of the scope of work in order to find funding for this consultant, which is, Arthur's confirming is a reasonable path to follow. Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think you're, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, Tom, go ahead then, Arthur.
My question is, my question is, who gets to decide this individual that's going to assist the board, planning board? Is that going to be an entity outside of this board? Are we going to have the ability to hire an individual that we feel comfortable with? To me, that's paramount in terms of having access to a source that we feel is neutral. And as Bob has questioned, there's a lot of politics around this and people are for and against. How do we eliminate that? I mean, that's not the issue for me. The issue for me is what's in the best interest, my phrase all the time, tattooed on my head. What's in the best interest of the town? And my concern is safety. And so is this something that we would need to have expertise about how other airports are run and what's the general sense of what is in the best interest of the public? The politics is always gonna be there. I mean, we're human beings. But I don't want to get sucked into any black holes on a political issue, one side or the other. I don't think that's fair to the community. And I'll stop talking.
Okay. Arthur, do you have a comment?
Just a brief one. I think flushing out the, the issues that you recommend, Bob, is, makes a lot of sense because I think you're gonna see it, they're gonna fall into multiple categories. So it's, it's, it's just not one source that we're gonna be looking at. There will be a technical thing that I think somebody with airport experience would, could help us with. We might feel comfortable that if we got a technical thing from the airport's current consultant, that it would be okay because they're gonna provide it in a document to us that is provided, that's been issued by somebody else. All right? Sometimes it's hard for us to go chase some of those down or anybody unless you have a consultant who works in that. The others could be from a legal perspective. Where our own town council may be helpful for that. I, I think there's just gonna be multiple categories. The other ones, we're gonna come in and we're gonna take a look. Well, how's this wrap into the West Chatham Neighborhood Center? I'm, I'm real concerned about that, that we don't completely disconnect with that piece. Now, there's a good part of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center that's outside of this issue. I don't want that to get thrown out either. So what's the fringe things that we have to deal with in here? And I don't believe that this is an all or nothing thing. I think that there is some sort of resolution to a lot of these things, and they, they might not be as many technical as, as, as we might think they are. But I'm, I'm looking at it from the perspective that there is some fringe areas in here that are gonna impact some of the properties. And if we don't take a look at those and say, is this going to completely eliminate the West Chatham Neighborhood Center? Or is there some way that that, that that particular piece of property can still live with, with, within it? And if we don't define that and we leave it in just a plain black and white, if you're, if you got a foot inside the, the RPZ, then you have to comply with all this. I don't, I don't think that's what we're talking about. I think we're looking for that, that adjustment there, which needs to be fleshed out. Now, there could be, how many properties? It could be six, 10, you know, 20? I don't know. I, I, I think I would like to know it. I'd like to know what the zoning is. I'd like to know if there's anything that is there on those properties. What is it that they could do? Can it still work with the West Chatham Neighborhood Center? Can we get affordable housing on some of those and still not, not be an impact and not have this issue with the RPZ? And I think unless we go through that due diligence, and again, that's some of the things that I, I'd be more than willing to start to flush out, work with the planner, work with the community department, development department, and Catherine, to try to get some of that information to all of us. And then there could be that category where you do have to go to and reach out to an expert. That might not have to be right off the bat, though. I think a lot of these are going to be internal things. We may have to ask some of the community, too, on what their thoughts are associated with this. Once we have mapped that out. So I think a little bit of this homework is gonna be internal. Could be a couple of meetings that we should do. Katie's suggestion was, was right on. Let's, let's, us figure it out. I, I can come up with my list pretty quickly, and I'd be happy to share it with the board on the things. And I'd be happy to point out specific things that I'm interested in.
Yeah. Mr. Kayken?
I want to be perfectly clear, having gone through this board, having gone through the first round of a bylaw that had been constructed by the Airport Commission, that I do not want to see people who have spoken, that are attached to the town, who have a bias. And I can be very specific about that, but I want flesh, fresh news. I want people that we, this board can count on that are invited to the meetings because the board invites them to the meeting. There are individuals that came in front of us talking about the Airport Commission, and from the get-go, they were biased. And I don't think that does this board any good.
Thank you.
How you eliminate the bias, if you can't, if we allow people to come in who are against the airport, how are we?
I'm not talking about, I'm not.
No, no, I mean, it's a bias. What, everyone has an opinion here. I'm not sure how you, you get to classify what's the bias and what's a good opinion.
Would you like an example?
No, I'm just, I, I, I just, I'm concerned, again, this, if, if we're gonna get two-thirds of the, of the town to vote yes on this, it's going to need to be handled in a way that is, that eliminates the bias. That's our job. But we're going to have to listen to people who, from all, from everywhere if we're going to do our job.
Bob, I don't object to anything you've just said, and I support it. What I'm objecting to is that when we are told by someone who has been hired by the town that this is the only answer, and I see that as biased. I'm not talking about people who live at the, around the airport. I'm not talking about either political side of this. But we've been told at meetings, this is the only answer. And I don't buy that.
So if I could just interject, I think what, the solution that was proposed at the last meeting was to look at an independent consultant who presumably, we're gonna say this person is not biased, and that that would ease some of these considerations. And I'd just like to get back to the question, and I think it came up from you, Tom, about when we're in the actual hiring or selection process of the consultant, which is a bit ahead of the game. We're not quite there yet. But when we are in that process, I understand that the planning board does have, we get to recommend who we like. But I'm gonna ask Katie for clarification on how that selection and hiring process actually takes place.
Again, it will, it will all depend on the scope of services and whether or not there is a request for an aviation attorney or an aviation engineer. There are, in the state's procurement laws, 30B allowances for architects and engineers to be hired. We can, we can go directly to somebody and ask them, you know, to give us a, give us a quote. At times, we need to go to three people to ask for a quote as well. And I think it all depends on what the scope of services is. And at that point in time, we'll work through the process, and I will work with the board. You know, we'll work through the, we'll work through it together. At this point in time, because again, we don't know if it's an, again, an attorney may not be part of that exemption under 30B. And so therefore, we may need to, you know, put a scope of services together, request three quotes, and, and, you know, get some people to respond to us. It's all going to be determined based on the questions that are asked in the scope of services that's determined by the board as we move through the process.
All right.
If I could, Madam Chair, just because the letter had been brought up from the, from the Select Board, and I would just like to clarify that the, that the request is that the Select Board asks that the planning board take up the matter again and work diligently in conjunction with the Airport Commission to craft a protective zoning bylaw that realizes broad support, which may be favorably recommended to town meeting voters in the future. And so again, it does, you know, it's, it's not solely on the planning board, though I think that that just, I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you. Yes. It's a collaborative effort at this point. And it says to annual town meeting in the future. So we're not working necessarily with the deadline. I think we're working with the project. And in that regard, because it just came up this afternoon, I would just like to suggest to the board, and I think one of you said, we don't want to get totally focused just on this one issue. We have a lot of long-range planning initiatives that a lot of hard work and good, good work has been put into, including the massing of residential structures. Bob and, Bob Wurchafter and Ally did a lot of really careful analysis of, of our database. And we have, we stopped at a very good place where we have excellent information. But we could consider moving forward with that bylaw, the massing of residential structures. We also have subdivision rules and regulations. Arthur's put in a lot of work and has some proposals about how those can be revised. So I just, in general, in our long-range planning initiatives, I think we can balance things so that we can move forward on some of the other things we've been working on. Yes. Mr. Dubis?
Madam Chairman, unfortunately, some of the projects that we have are gonna be interrupted by the airport because some of the projects are, are very close to the airport.
You mean like West Chatham?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, but as far as the other things, yes. So in order to move forward with the West Chatham section, we need to move forward with the airport section. We need to take each one very carefully, diligently. And, and we might, we might be Christmas time before we need to ask the right question to consultants. It's gonna take, it's gonna take a long time, in my opinion, that we should, the airport should be dissected in, in little pieces and go with, okay, this is a question, let's find an answer. This is a question, let's find an answer. And then put all the answers together, and hopefully we come out with a whole pie.
Yeah, sounds, that's very intelligent. Thank you, Bob. And Warren?
Yeah, this is Warren Chain. I was not in favor of hiring a consultant, but I see the merit of, from the board's point of view, and I'm very content to go forward that way. I am disappointed that we could not get to town meeting, but realize we probably would not have prevailed at time meeting. So it's may just be, it may be fine. But I would also say that personally, I have some major issues with the RPZ zoning proposed by the Airport Commission. But they're reasonably crisp and understood, and I believe the resolution of those issues is already within the expertise of the town. And I brought them up in the past. It's not the place to bring them up again. But I, I, I believe other people on the, members on the board may have issues which don't need to wait until we have a consultant identified to try and resolve. There may be many more issues than we've even thought of that may need a consultant. I'm happy to concede that point. But I don't think we ought to delay, defer, postpone consideration of the RPZ zone, proposed zoning bylaw until every answer is asked and answered. I would propose we move forward expeditiously in a measured way to seek answers to the questions that I have, which I already know are within our purview and expertise in the town to answer. And I assume there may be some, some other questions in that category among the other board members. And then at the very least, we cross those off the list as we go forward to try and get a consultant to deal with maybe more significant issues. I do believe that we, you know, that it's very important that we move forward with the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning. I mean, to some extent, it's going to be a model for the other neighborhood centers. As every day that goes by, there's another developer out putting in, you know, a proposal or considering how best to build multi-billion dollar condos in, in commercial zones, which is not in the best interest of the town. It's not in accordance with our bylaw. And until we get some increased density in, according to what had been the quid pro quo back when, when we rezoned 28 to be residential zoning, and can understand and get the board's vision implemented into a crisp, proposed West Chatham Neighborhood bylaw, you know, it's going to become an ever more difficult task going down the road. And one more project, two more projects, three more projects are gonna come along, which are gonna make it even more difficult and less productive even when it happened. So I would hope that we can move expeditiously on that, but also expeditiously on getting the answers to the questions we have for which we can get answers. That's all.
Yeah, I think that sounds good. And I think the working session that Katie's proposing as our first step, that, that a lot of that can be discussed at that first working session or in following working sessions, we can discuss both questions that we think we can get answers from internally, and then also ask the kind of questions that will help to define the scope of work in order to move forward with the hiring process for the independent consultant. So I think we can do both at these, at a working session. So, so I think what, you know, basically, Katie just wanted to update us on that process of what was involved. And I think what we'll do is we'll put working sessions on the agenda in future. We'll need to consider and vote on adding a third meeting each month and what the schedule for that might be. There's been a request to postpone that until after August, which is a reasonable suggestion. Also, we may not have a planner. Also, we may not have a planner, a new planner in place till that time, and the staff is kind of overworked at this point without that principal planner. So we want to be considerate of our wonderful community development department, and I really mean that, we really have great people helping us. So I think we've kind of gone through this discussion, unless there's any last comments, I'm going to move to Bob Dubus's favorite. Yes, Mr. Gagin, did you have another comment?
I do have a question for clarification.
Sure.
Is it my understanding that this board, I made the request, but does this board support that we have access to the procedure or procedures that were followed by the airport commission when they were able to hire a consultant of their choice? Are we going to see those, that documentation so that we understand that process?
I'm going to have to refer that question to Katie. Again, I think Katie has, somehow I'm echoing, has responded that, I don't, they didn't hire Gale Associates to be a consultant specifically to write the bylaw. It's a more universal application, but I'm going to go back to Katie to describe that to you, and I'm sure the, probably the documentation is available, but I'm going to ask Katie about that.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. So first of all, I apologize, I turned on my microphone on the computer as opposed to.
Okay.
I apologize for that. So I can certainly share the request for proposals with, with the board that the airport commission slash town had utilized when they hired Gale Associates. It's all public record. I can work with Terry, there's documentation, I'm sure, from airport commission meetings about how they went through the process or what that, you know, what that was specifically. Again, it's different, and I actually expect that our process would likely be less onerous as we move forward. I think that my suggestion is really, let's move through a process and determine what the scope of services and what questions we need answered by a consultant. As I stated, the airport commission slash town had gone out with a request for proposals. That's, you know, a lot of times a much more, a much longer process, a much more in-depth process, and we would be looking to do something more along the lines of a request for quotes. So again, I'm happy to share that if the, if the planning board would like to see it. I would request that through Mr. Whalen about what, how the process was followed. It's all public record, so I have no problem with that.
And it was probably some years ago that they hired Gale Associates?
I would, I would consider that it was probably a number of years ago, yes.
Yeah. And I think their scope of services is much broader than what we're looking for here. So anyway, but yes, we can make, certainly, that information can be available. So any other comments from the board or the public? Maybe I should take a moment to introduce someone to everyone. This is Mike Shell, who has recently been elected to the Select Board and is now the liaison from the Select Board to the Planning Board. So it's good that we have Mike on board, and thank you for attending our meeting. And if there's no other comments from anyone, we want to go to Bob Dubus's favorite motion.
Selectman gets to hear the first, first, and most prominent thing that I say. Well, do it. Move to adjourn the meeting second.
Let's do our roll call vote. Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
This is Catherine Halpern, and I approve. Let's note the time of adjournment as 7:29 in the evening, and thank you, everybody, for participating, and please enjoy the rest of the evening.